The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. Councilman James Green will give the invocation and Councilwoman Fuller will lead us with the pledge. Stand please.
Thank you, Lord, for this day and thank you for this opportunity, another day that we can be servants for this community and for this great city. We actually give us that we need, that we can operate this meeting as you would have us to do. And, Lord, after we finish taking care of the business of this city, we ask that whatever we do, that we can give you some glory out of it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible 00:00:16] A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
[inaudible 00:00:22] [inaudible 00:00:25] President.
[inaudible 00:00:28] President. [inaudible 00:00:30] Here. [inaudible 00:00:31] Here. [inaudible 00:00:33]
Here. Tomorrow I entertain a motion for the minutes of the administrative conference on the eighth and the council meeting that was held on the ninth. Does any council member have any awards or distinguished guest recognitions at this time? Seeing none, Mayor Perkins.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Mr. Green, property standards. Anyone have anything for Mr. relatives of property standards for Mr. Green?
Just had that one issue on Rockaway also, we'll catch that.
All right. We'll speak to Mr. Clark tomorrow, I believe, maybe. And we got our budget to actual financial report from Ms. Jones. There's no public hearing. Ms. Jones, is there any legislation to be added for tomorrow?
[inaudible 00:01:00]
Okay. And we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Tom Arsenault.
Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm here to support an amendment to the UDC, Superior Ordinance Number 81. I think there were some legal issues raised. We agree with the MPC's interpretation of the UDC, that this would be a permitted transitional amendment. I'll be here tomorrow to speak as well, but I want to let you know that we believe unanimously passed by the MPC. We certainly hope that you would give that due consideration, your deliberations tomorrow, and I'll have more to say about the legal issues tomorrow. Be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Will the legal issues discussed might be interesting?
To the extent legal issues are ever interesting, Mr. Flurry, that's probably... I would hope the answer to that question is yes, Mr. Flurry, but sometimes folks that talk to lawyers believe the answer to that question is always no.
Well, I'll wait with grave excitement.
Thank you, Mr. Flurry.
Mr. Tracy Williams.
My name is Tracy Williams, Dunne State, where I live, 324 West 69th Street, Shreveport, 71106. I'm here because I am suing Southern University of Shreveport because of breach of contract. Ms. Cheryl Blackshire changed the grading grid after the last class was over with, and that's against the law. It wasn't... It wasn't... The grading grid helped some students and hurt others. I then initiated an appeal, and during the appeal process, I spoke with Cheryl Blackshire, Dean Brown, and Sharon Hearn-Williams, and I also spoke with the chancellor, Dr. Ellis. Dr. Ellis promised me an answer back in a week, and he avoided me when I called. It was stated the first day of school, Cheryl Blackshire stated that we can get all lawyers or anything, and nothing's going to happen to her. And how everything happened with the appeal process, going through the appeal process, and ending the appeal process, was nothing solved. And it seems like it was true. Cheryl Blackshire does what she wants, and no one does anything about it. My grades were changed, I asked her about it, she blamed it on the computer, and...
Chairman.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Would you ask the speaker to suspend just for a moment? I'm completely lost what we're talking about here. What item of the agenda? I mean, I'm lost. Somebody help me. What is this about? What does it have to do with the city council? I'm lost. Somebody can help me?
I was...
Ms. Flurry, will you yield briefly?
Yes.
Ma'am, we appreciate your comments, but as Councilman Flurry has indicated, the city council has no jurisdiction over any action you may have filed against the university, and we are without authority to do anything about what you were talking about. Our rules do presently allow any citizen to address any matter of public concern. It's not clear to me that what you're describing falls into that category, but understand that we don't regulate Southern University, and so we can't help you with this.
Oh, okay, so is there any way I can get help, or can you, you know...
Maybe you might want to consult a lawyer, but no one around the horseshoe can advise you about that today.
Okay, thank you.
I was giving... Councilman Green, I'm sorry.
Also, Councilman Nicholson is a lawyer.
Thank you, Councilman Green.
Ms. Sandra Wallace.
I thought Ms. Williams was headed to a path of where it was something that the city could have something to do with, I didn't know.
I'm going to have to withdraw mine, because I was here as well, thinking that maybe somebody could help me about Southern University and the goings on there, but since you can, I'm withdrawing.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Ron LePo.
Ron LePo, 1132 Erie Street. I come before you regarding the 10-84 of Chapter 10. I want to commend the council for the amendment that I understand to be proposed, which changes the section, the new section, to require that there be a separate entrance if minors are allowed in the store for liquor, and I think that does solve the problem. It requires that there be a 21-year age limit, or requirement to be at least 21 to enter a store, that does not have a separate entrance for their liquor. This does not allow grocery stores and drugstores, Family Dollar, Dollar Generals, et cetera, to all have an aisle for liquor in the middle of their store, where all of the minors would be exposed to it, and it levels the playing field with regard to the economic impact that the original amendment, or the original replacement of that provision would have had. I think that would have been a very significant one, and I would suggest, as I understand, if this gets voted on today, you would vote for the amendment first, and then you would vote for the actual provision, and I would say that it would be very dangerous to not take, not vote for the amendment and to strike it down, and then to vote for the provision would be catastrophic for many reasons, including putting minors in liquor stores, but also it would be catastrophic to this economy. You would put many, many independent liquor stores out of business, and you would suck the money out to other areas where these major corporations have their offices. Does anybody have any questions for me about that?
Councilman Green.
Yes. My question is, and I'm just trying to balance it out to make sense to my brain, once they come in your store, either drive-through or drive-through, and you said they don't want to expose kids to the alcohol, what happens if whoever drives through the drive-through got their kids in the car? And then, in the grocery store, if they go in and get whatever they got out of the separate door, okay, the kids stay outside, they leave the kid out in the buggy, but then they, once they get the liquor, then they put it in the buggy, and then the kid ride with them out to the car, and they got to ride home with it?
So, most of the...
So, my question is, what is... We're talking about exposing the kids, so what would be a... How are we going to accomplish not exposing the kids? Because then, once they get to the house, then they tell the kids, "Go bring me a cold."
So, right, so we have to depend on the parents, and the piece that is missing from the description you're giving is that the drugstores and the grocery stores welcome the 15- to 20-year-old without a parent. So, they can be walking around the store, they can shoplift, they can do whatever they want. The liquor stores don't do that. They require that they're 21. If... You're right, if a parent is with the child, and then the parent lets the child have the liquor, then that's, that kind of gets beyond our reach.
So, what about, what do you say about the shoplifting?
So, the, a lot of the shoplifters, that's a very common age group to be shoplifting, they don't have any money, and when you have drugstores or grocery stores where minors, and I mostly mean the 15- to 20-year-old person, is welcome in the store, they're able to walk right up to that product, and they can shoplift it. They're not welcome in the liquor store, and they're not able to do that there.
So, is this to accomplish not exposing, or what is it to accomplish, to stop the shoplifting? Because I'm just kind of confused. Like I say, if you go to the grocery store, and you buy liquor, you buy whatever, and say you got to go through a separate door to get it, then they can leave a kid outside the door, in the buggy or beside the buggy, and then they say, "Okay, I go in here and I'll get it, and then I bring it back and put it in my buggy," and then the kid can ride in the buggy with them, or walk with them with the buggy.
In those cases, the parents with that kid, the ones you're describing, you've got a parent with, you've got a 21-year-old that's with that person, and that's not... Sure, it'd be better if that didn't happen too, but we got to rely on the parents of these minors to handle that situation. But these stores welcome anybody of any age to walk in any time, without any adult supervision. That's that distinction. There also is, besides that, and that's a pretty important one, but I think you also need to consider the economic impact. If, let's say you did do that, and you said, "Oh, I'm not worried about 15- to 20-year-olds walking through all the Walgreens and Dollar Generals and having the opportunity to touch the liquor or try to steal it if they want to, or try to buy it, and I'm not worried about the policing of having to police an additional 50 or 60 stores." If you said that, then you also need to look at the fact that there's an economic impact on this town. You've got rules the way they are right now, and you have market equilibrium, as we are now, with, call it 100 liquor stores in town right now. What would happen if you did this? You would immediately have 150 liquor stores, because all these, and I picked numbers, I don't know the exact numbers, all the Walgreens, and the CVSs, and the Brookshires, and Albertsons, and Walmarts, and Dollar Generals, all these places would put liquor in. That would spread all that business across all those stores. We don't need that many stores, so what would happen? We'd end up back at 100. But what would happen is that those would be a different 100. So, the independent, the locally-owned stores would be out of business, most of them would be, and that's the way it is in a lot of other markets. And if you just figure, "Okay, free market, so what? Those guys all go out of business, and all that money goes to another city, and that's okay with you," then that's, you know, then maybe that's not a valid argument. But I would propose that when you have a set of circumstances set up already, and you have stores that have opened up and gone into business and doing business with these rules, that to change those rules and totally change that landscape economically would be a very damaging thing to the city, in addition to the fact that you would have a whole different set of rules with regard to minors in the liquor stores.
So, you're saying with the amendment, the whole, that puts the whole bottle of wax together, and we'll be good?
Totally not great for me, honestly, for my personal business, because it actually does affect mine in a way that's only about me, so I'm not talking about that, okay? But for the city and the good of the city overall, with the amendment, I think it's palatable, and I think it's fair in a way that allows, there's a particular customer, a particular store, Corks and Cuts, that's a part of this issue, because they had a liquor store, and they wanted to be able to sell meat. If they had a liquor store, and they required people to come in and 21, be 21, then they should be able to sell meat.
First of all, thank you very much. Councilman Butch asked me about how I was feeling about it, and at that point, I told him that I didn't have it all together, but you've helped me a lot, so to you and to you, I feel better now.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. LePo, I take issue to what you said. Competition is the greatest thing in the world, and if you get competition, you're going to be a better person for it. The Chinese came into America and brought caskets. You can go online now, Walmart, and order Mama's Casket, and it'll be at the funeral home the next morning. Funeral homes have gone out of business if this continues to allow, be allowed. But in fact of the matter, the Chinese caskets, as you start up the steps of the church, Mama would fall through. They weren't made very well, through the bottom of the casket, and so they have improved the casket business tremendously, which I spent about 12 years as salesman. And so, the prices got better. And so, you say, I just heard you say, that if we allow this to stand, that there'll be lots of liquor stores to go out of business. How can you say that? Do you have statistics and numbers? You're only supposing that's what might happen. I propose to you that if this legislation is allowed to be passed, that you will be a better person. Your company will be a better citizen, will contribute more, to help more people in the community. You will have better prices, you will offer more and better deals to people who want to come to your store, instead of going to one of these big chain stores. So, I take issue with you on it. I believe it will help you to be a better liquor store.
So, I understand your point, and I agree, competition is good for business. This is a, this would be a non-level playing field, and so that would not be what you expect with competition, and it is a massive metamorphosis to the way things are going and the way the market is now. This market is not without competition. There are many, many liquor stores in this market. And ask anybody that is in any market that has liquor stores and has chain stores that allow the liquor to be in there with the grocery store, and there aren't any liquor stores there anymore, or there are very, very few of them. And one example is Bozer City. There are very few independent liquor stores there, and the reason is, because the grocery stores, it is, it is a convenience, it is, there is a reason for that, that they can pick up all those things at the same time. But it's also unfair that you have, that you have minors allowed in there, and it makes it a lot easier.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. My question isn't so much for Mr. LePo, but I found some of the things that my colleague, Councilman Green, brought up really interesting, and I'm wondering if it'd be appropriate to have Agent Cisco address some of those things now, or we should wait till we get to that point on the agenda?
Is it relevant to...
It's relevant to some of these questions, but, I mean, we could either do it now, or we could do it when we're under, when we're having comments about the legislation itself. I defer to your, to you on that.
I'm, yeah.
If you know what...
Yeah.
I think to expedite the speakers, let's, let's do it.
He's the last, he's the last one.
He's the last speaker?
That's why I figured I would see if I wanted to entertain that now or later.
Is he available?
Agent Cisco is, yes, he is. If he's comfortable coming up now. Thank you, Mr. LePo.
Thank you.
Chairman. Councilman Butch.
Agent Cisco, you and I have been working on this, trying to come up with a way to... I think that this was brought to the, to the Public Safety Committee in a way to try to make Shreveport better, and to get us in line with what the state is doing in other areas. And you have some information. I guess that one question I have, Mr. LePo mentioned, shoplifting, you also work pretty hand-in-hand with the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
As far as shoplifting goes, let's just use Bozer as an example, what, do they have a rampant problem with shoplifting from these stores?
Just from listening to Mr. Stevenson with Brookshires, no. Plus, all the big box stores usually hire either the Shreveport Police Department, the Marshal's Office, or the Sheriff's Office, so they always have officers on duty.
Because our concern is the safety of the citizens of Shreveport. I believe that we all sitting up here will agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we, we're wanting the citizens of Shreveport to be safe, but we also, I agree with Councilman Flurry to a certain extent. I don't, I don't want to legislate the free enterprise system. I'm not quite sure that that's a good idea. So, but, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry. My big concern goes to what I think Councilman Green's concern is about introducing alcohol to areas where youth are going to be, youth that are not supervised in particular, but do you believe that we will see an insurgence of smaller liquor stores in low-income neighborhoods if we change this?
I do not.
Do you believe that people will be, do you believe that there will be some jeopardy to your liquor license if you have a theft problem that you can't get under control?
You, as a council, can address that.
So, we could...
Us, as the police department, can bring you a problem, and you act as the commissioner of alcohol for the city of Shreveport. So, if I bring you a problem, you can either, you have several different options. You can suspend their license, you can revoke their license, you can fine them, there's several, you can put regulations on them, to where they can only sell alcohol from certain times of the day, you can require them where they can only sell alcohol behind the counter.
So, you're saying that, let's say, I've got a lot of, I've got Family Dollars all over my district.
Okay.
Now, some of them might not qualify for a liquor license because of their proximity to a school.
Correct.
But, so I have one area, one that's not that close to a school or church, and they get their liquor license. If they have a theft problem, and you bring it to us, we can actually stipulate that that entire chain loses all of their liquor licenses in the city if we wanted to.
I'll use, a case that I used on, Councilman Bowman had an issue in his district, and he come to the police, the chief, and said, "What can we do with this?" Well, they ended up surrendering their license before they come before the board, because they knew they were going to get in way more trouble attempting to keep their license.
No, you already, you already regulate people with AVO cards to make sure they're checking IDs.
I do.
So, if someone's coming out and, you know, getting, getting alcohol for Pookie, and then y'all can actually regulate stores that are not handling their business.
We try to run several underage every month to do what we call compliance, and me personally, I've never wrote a Walmart or a Brookshires a ticket for selling to an underage. Usually, the ones that I, that violate that law are the liquor stores.
And I remember that the gentleman from Brookshires made a comment about how they, they kind of tag the alcohol. Can you describe that, what they do in those?
They have, it's just like whenever you go to a clothing store, and they put a sensor on your shirt. They put sensors on their bottles, so if they walk out with it, the sensor goes off. Well, at the Brookshires, every Brookshires in the city of Shreveport has a police officer usually standing at the door.
Okay, that answers most of my questions.
Councilman Butch. Agent, one of your comments addressed my question, but I'll ask you to reiterate the point. You said that in all your years of doing alcohol enforcement, you've never written a ticket to Walmart or Brookshires for selling to an underage individual.
No.
So, based on your experience, these large stores, like Walmart, Brookshires, other grocery stores, they abide by the laws concerning the sale of alcohol to minors?
From a statistical point, yes.
And so, most of your problems with underage sales are not with those large stores, they're with small liquor stores.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilman Green.
So, if I, my truck, Black Beauty, is outside. So, if I drive up to the drive-through today with some underage folk in my truck, and I want a, whatever they sell there, and they put a piece of tape over it, and I'm cool, then once I drive off, I can give it to everybody in the back, so how do, how do we, how do we, is this fixing that, or do we just pray about it?
I think it's going to take a whole lot of prayer.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just asking.
Under state law, if that is your child, you can actually purchase the alcohol yourself and hand the alcohol to your child.
Yes, sir, right.
The first problem we're going to have is them kids in the back of the truck.
Yes, sir.
So, besides that, I mean, I think we're going to have to ask Jesus.
Right, and like I'm saying, we fixing this, it's going to be pretty when we get through fixing it, but will the problem actually be solved? I mean, and so, that's basically, I'm just throwing it out, parent there.
I can't answer.
Yes, sir.
And be...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Butch.
I want to go back to what you said about the, about the shoplifting, and I want to make sure I understand this. So, let's say that we have a dollar store of some sort that is able to get this license, which, from what you've told me, like, I've got three or four in my, in my district, but they're all within so many feet of schools, so they probably wouldn't even, because none of these dollar stores at this point have a liquor license.
Correct.
So, they would have to go through the process, get the liquor license, be determined by y'all in the MPC if they even qualify to have that liquor license. But let's say, for instance, you have one particular dollar store, there's two chains in town, and they are continually selling to underage, or they're continually having robberies of this alcohol, you have the right to come to the council and shut them down?
Correct. The alcohol license is a privilege, it's not a right. So, we allow them that privilege to sell alcohol. Depending on what they do with that privilege is on them. If they can't police it themselves, then we'll step in and we'll police it, and then we'll request that y'all either suspend or revoke their license.
What, what is the issue with my amendment? What do you see as the issue with my amendment?
The 21 and under is already enforced. I mean, if you're a liquor store, you can't go in there if you're under 21 anyway, already. So, it's not, that's already in place.
When we talk about high alcohol content, that's above 6%.
Correct.
So, does CVS right now sell wine that's over 6%?
I'm sure they do.
Are there some beers now on the market that are over 6%?
Most of your craft beers, which we have two craft breweries now, we have another one coming into town, he's in, they just bought the building on Linwood, most of the craft beer that you buy now is over 6%.
So, what would that do to these stores? Because I've, you know, I've gotten emails from, and I'm trying to be receptive to everybody who emails from, but stores that just specifically sell beer and wine, what would it do to them if they're selling over 6%? Would it make it to where it's mandatory to be 21 to enter those convenience stores or CVS?
Or do away with the high-content alcohol. We have 95 permits right now in the city of Shreveport through the state law that have high-content permits. They do theirs a little bit different, so anywhere that has high-content alcohol, whether it be beer, wine, or liquor, they have to purchase that high-content alcohol permit, which allows them to sell spirits, wine, or beer. However, because it's the local law, they can't sell spirits or any high-content alcohol liquors.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I want to be clear, because I reviewed the amendment, and I thought I could, I mean, I thought I had, are you telling me that the amendment, in your opinion, is redundant, because there's already a law?
Correct. If you're primary, if the primary commodity of the location, in other words, if alcohol is the primary commodity of the alcohol of your business, so the main part of your business is alcohol, no one under the age of 21 can go in there right now, already.
But there's, 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 there's a little bit more to that than just age requirement.
That's the age requirement, 21 in Shreveport.
Well, I mean, there's nothing, nothing, either the original or the amendment is a panacea. I mean, I mean, I think Councilman Green showed us that, that once the beverages come into possession of an adult, parent or otherwise, once it leaves the premises, it's, it's, it's... of an adult, parent or otherwise, once it leaves the premises, it's unsupervisable except for the adult in the car, in the house.
Correct.
So we're just trying to ensure that the company possession of it is limited to the proper people that would avoid certain fallout from, you know, from the consumer in this store that's actually selling it, so I don't...
We actually address the kid that drives up in the parking lot and gets the guy standing in the parking lot to go in and buy it for him, we actually address that now.
Yeah, I mean, I, that wasn't part of the equation, but I, I mean, I know that there are guys that want alcohol and kids, you know, go buy something, and I give you, you know, give you a couple of dollars. I mean, that, that's a, that's one of the other worst-case scenario that we can't control automatically unless, unless you're there on the scene to see it, but if somebody go in their proper age, they can do it. So anyway...
That would be parenting the parent, I guess.
Uh-huh.
Parenting the parent, I guess.
Well, I'm just saying that we ain't going to solve it all with one amendment or, but we just want to come in compliance or at least add to the discussion. You brought it to us, and we trying to just make the right decision with this.
Thank you.
But I know, again, it's not the panacea, so we'll see how it works. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Thompson?
If you have a liquor store now, and the law is strictly enforced, can they sell potato Can they sell cheese?
According to the law, it says any other business, so I would say no.
Can they sell stoppers for liquor bottles, whatever they're called, when you open your liquor?
You know, we enforce what y'all give us, and right now, the way the law reads, it says any other business, so I guess we'd have to determine what any other business is.
Would this amendment correct that problem?
I think so.
The amendment or the, or the new ordinance?
Not the new ordinance.
The amendment, in your mind, would create more problems?
The amendment is already enforced, because it's, you have to be 21 to go into a liquor store now.
But if you, if you have the amendment and some, and you have the age restriction of 21, couldn't that liquor store then sell potato chips or cheese?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Fleury.
Mr. Chairman, would you ascertain from Councilman Green what percent 2020 is?
Run it by me. I didn't hear.
I said, what percent is 2020?
What percentage?
2020 being the code.
I didn't ask my cousin, I don't ask him.
I withdraw the question.
I didn't have to ask my cousin, I don't... My cousins up in, my cousins that live up in Virginia, they don't have, they got some other stuff, they got some steals, in fact, we don't even have stuff, cousins.
All right. Next, next on the, but I did, let me step back. I did, I know that the administration did have two appointees coming up for one, both for SPAR department, and I didn't know if you had one of them here today or two of them here, or they're here today.
Mr. Chairman, one of them has been withdrawn.
Okay.
The Recreation Division manager's position has been withdrawn.
Okay, so the manager of SPAR Athletics?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you like to see him today or tomorrow?
No, I just, as long as he was, I mean, if he was here.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, because you know, usually, it's either, when y'all see him today, then they don't have to come tomorrow, so I'm just making sure you're good to go with today.
I'm, I'm fine with them not coming tomorrow, just, I know that somebody new in the audience, and I didn't know if that was just to be here, or, I mean, I follow you.
Yeah, no, that's what y'all want, yeah, he's here, so let's, let's do it.
Okay.
Anyone having an issue with that, that's okay.
I'm good.
Good evening, I'm Douglas Curry, Jr.
Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir.
All right. Normally, we'll have you come up, and someone would ask a question or two relative to your background, your experience, and all your resume, so I have Councilman Butcher up to speak first.
Mr. Curry, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor, is this a new position, are we replacing somebody, or is this a...
No, no, Councilman, this isn't a new position, we're not replacing, nobody was in that position before.
Okay, so exactly what, Mr. Curry, what will you be doing as Athletics Division Manager? What does that entail?
Well, I guess, first off, just be overseeing some athletic departments that's going on now, trying to, trying to make them better. As I said, when I come in, my goal is just first off to be a sponge, you know, and just to take up the things that I need to take up to make this better, you know, be an asset and a liability, so my goal is just to come in and just, and just do what I need to do to make it better, so just oversee athletics.
So that benefits the city by, by having you there to start more programs, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what's your, what's your background?
My background, as I said, my name's Douglas, I was, I'm more athletically inclined, but education is very important to me. I was born in Spring Hill, Louisiana, the big city of Spring Hill. Went to Louisiana Tech as a student athlete.
That's all I need to hear. I'm a Spring Halian, so that's good, yeah.
God blessed me there to have a great career, graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Foreseology, so I just foundation there, be selfless and be a teammate in any aspect, not just athletics, but in anywhere I go, just help be a teammate to make things better all the way around.
So what have you done prior, prior to this?
I worked railroad for about eight years, and now I'm coaching Evangel Christian Academy, being a coach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that is a big plus, Spring Hill does, does athletics.
There were a lot of Currys in Homer, by the way.
Yes, sir.
My dad used to live on Curry Street, so...
All right. You know Devin White?
I do know Devin White, very well. He's, he's a great ambassador for our city.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Curry, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
This, this, I mean, you couldn't, I know Councilman Butcher asked you what you thought was the duty and responsibility of this position, but I think you're going to go in and try to develop some needs, program evaluated, and then develop what you think is appropriate to implement, is that, is that...
Yes, sir.
So I guess I need to ask the mayor, what, since the position was not filled for a period of time, what motivated you to want to reach out and create this, not create it, but to put a person in this position to do what?
Yeah, so a couple, I think it's been a couple of months now, you all confirmed Pershing Mara to one of the appointed positions.
Yes.
And it's just bottom-up feedback from the organization, they were understaffed.
Okay.
When you're understaffed, you don't do the, you don't get as many programs as you need to be out there, you don't have many, as many ears listening to the community, so just bottom-up feedback to the administration from the departments.
Okay, that makes sense. So coming in new, what would you think would be some of the needs that you would first look at as presenting?
For me, very important mentorship, you know.
Mentorship?
Yes, sir. I'm a firm believer in more mentorship. I embrace it, I love it, and I think if we want our youth to be positive, they need to see positive, so it's taxing sometimes, it can be challenging, but the rewards in the end will be great, as long as we put forth a great effort.
Well, you know, I subscribe to if somebody asks you to do something, if you can't do it, you say, "Yeah, I'll take the position," and you run and do it, that's, I've seen that be successful. So can you come back to us, let's say in six months, and sort of give us a progress report of what the things that you were doing, and some of the things that you may be implementing?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's do that, because I'm, again, I'm totally clear on what departments, not department, but what sites would you look at putting programs into, I know you'll start somewhere, the most needed site first and then expand, so let's, if you confirm tomorrow, let's say six months, you come back and, and let me ask you some more questions.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Curry.
Yes, sir. All right. Yeah, I just say, well, you know, good luck on what's set in front of you, I believe, because we need, our kids, our youth need some mentorship and some positive direction to go in, and things to do also when they just go to the SPAR, not just to shoot ball or, you know, whatever, they need some kind of guidance also away from the house, so I appreciate that, that.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I just like to say congratulations.
Thanks a bunch, thank you so much, grateful, my heart is grateful, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we on the, on the playball with the fairgrounds field? Have we, have we gotten anywhere with that?
No, we didn't, we didn't get contact information from them, and they were supposed to reach out to the office, but I haven't gotten any emails nor has my staff, so not sure if they're still doing.
I had somebody ask me over the weekend about it, and I'll, I'll try to get you Shane Sharky's information.
Yeah, be happy to meet with him.
Unless, you know, Chairman, I know you had some other things going on with that too.
Well, like I said, we, I think they were waiting for some kind, and I gave him Shelley's information too, and he hadn't reached out to Shelley as well. Okay, all right.
Okay, good, I, I just, we were talking about youth, and it just made me think about that, I did get an email about that this weekend, so.
Yeah, not a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to that, that I hope that we can, if we have one or more groups interested in spending private money to renovate that ballfield, let's, let's have a process and select one and get going, because right now, it's, it's sitting empty and it's real ice, so, thank you.
All right. I did see Ms. Rome out, you got two guys sitting next to you, are they from SPAR also?
Yes.
Okay, y'all, y'all mind if I ask who they are, you have with you, ma'am? If they're staying? I hate to talk to you way out, but I just want, I was, you know, when I see them working or see them out with someone or want someone from the department, I just like where I'm the, if you'll come up to the mic real quick and just tell who you are, and that's it. I want to put you on the spot, I'd just like to see these young guys.
One of them was the student body president at Captain Shreve this past year, so you should be comfortable speaking at the microphone, trying to put nobody on blast.
It's like old, old weekend, Captain Shreve.
I just want you to just, just state your name and exactly what department you're working with, that's fine.
All right, so I'm Taylor Stevenson, I'm with SPAR Administration.
SPAR Administration, Taylor Stevenson, good to see you, Taylor.
And I'm Jamar C. Broadway, and I'm with SPAR Administration as well, so we got to experience a whole lot of SPAR. We like went to events and services, recreation, golf, it was like, SPAR is just big, I didn't know SPAR was that big.
They've been keeping y'all busy, in other words.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good, good deal, I'd like to know that, I'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you and Councilman Butcher need a facilitator on this playball, I, I'll nominate that Councilman Bradford step up and help y'all, because we need, we, we don't need to kick that down the can, the can down the road, and you and the mayor and all, y'all need to get together, let's get something moving on there. Let's hear the train blow whistle, move out and stay sure.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. Now, I've been in contact with a couple of people myself, we've talked, and I just know that Mr. Sharky hadn't reached back out as he was supposed to to us, so I didn't know where we were on that process, but anyway, I think that the administration...
But I have your commitment that you will try to get something moving on there.
Something has to get moving, you know, has to.
Y'all heard it.
Oh, yeah. Ready. All right, there are no items under consent agenda for introduction. Ms. Jones, can we proceed to regular agenda legislation?
Yes, sir. Under Resolution 86, proposing a code text amendment to the UDC for consideration by the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Resolution 90, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between Caddo Parish 911 Communications District Number One and the city of Shreveport. Resolution 91, declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair of city of Shreveport, Louisiana Water Booster Station located at 68th Street and Union Avenue, and ratifying the expenditure of approximately $250,083 of water and sewage revenue bond funds. Resolution 92 is to declare a state of public emergency in District F to create police presence and effectiveness in District F to authorize and request the Chief of Police to devise a plan with the City Marshal and the Sheriff, federal authorities, and the State Police to eliminate rampant crime in District F. Resolution 93, amending the Shreveport City Council rules of procedure concerning award ceremonies. Resolution 94, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 2,400 block of Murphy Street at Portland Avenue in honor of Mrs. Melanie Jones Thibodeau.
All right. Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I have two inquiries. One is with 92, and I'm going, I'm going to preserve that until Mr. Green comes back. But in regards to 93, since there's, the council is not subject to award ceremonies, I'm trying to get an understanding, Council Lady, of what, what was your intention on this legislation?
Well, I was thinking that we could, when we have all of the, like, resolutions and street dedications where people come up and we take time out of the meeting and suspend the rules to acknowledge them, that if one thing that we want to pay attention to as it pertains to citizens' involvement in our meetings, that we might consider an ad hoc ceremony prior to the meeting, like at 2:00, to make those acknowledgements instead of having them take place during the meeting time itself. I think that depending on the number of those, we might shave anywhere from 15 to 30 to 70 minutes off of our meeting time. And we can still, you know, we're still getting to have that acknowledgement happen. It's just an idea.
No, I, I'm standing, and certainly, I'm, you know, whenever we offer legislation, I want it to be good legislation, but I just want to observe to you, make an observation to the new council members. My four years, previous four years, the commentary and the extended time of commentary exceeds any meeting prior to this council. I think the process that we had in place with the Monday meetings being no, no commentary except for items on the agenda, and then on the Tuesday meeting where the commentary was, early, early commentary was items on the agenda, and then at the end of the meeting, public comments on whatever they deem they want to say. Now, I supported changing the rules because prior to the incident that happened with the police shooting and the sagged pants ordinance, those two items initiated what I thought was the hijacking of our public commentary, which infused just about vetting and any other means of frustrating, I mean, presenting their frustration before this council, which I think takes up the time. The awards, when we recognize somebody for a distinguished accomplishment or dedication, that's optional. They don't have to come before this body, I mean, especially with a street dedication, because we're going to go out to the street anyway and unveil the signs, so then if we got to recognize somebody for a distinguished accomplishment in a meeting, they're going to bring some people with them, and if we was to delay that for any period of time, then that person may, may not be around when we get ready to do that. So it's always, you know, like, a time thing where, you know, if you're going to do something, let's do it now, I mean, all the other bodies does it, and it does not interfere with their, with their agenda, you know, the school board, they have a period at the beginning of their meetings where they, they recognize, and the Paris Commission as well. I just think our task is to adhere to certain, certain rules, certain disciplinary rules that, that we will, you know, like we did today, I thought Councilman Fleury very... I thought Councilman Florrie very respectfully said, you know, this is something out of our preview. We can't do anything about Southern University. And I think we need to be more recognizing and being, extending that courtesy as best we can to people who come and present us with things that we have no jurisdiction over. So, I'm just thinking that this is not a good legislation.
Interesting, because when we talked about on the phone prior, you seemed pretty okay with the idea of moving all of this to a quarterly ceremony, a quarterly community ceremony. You seem pretty good with that idea. And all I'm suggesting is that we move this to before our meeting instead of during the actual meeting, so that we can accommodate the people that might want to show up and be acknowledged.
But we would have to, we would have to vote to adopt the resolution. We can't do it at 2:00 if we want to adopt the resolution till 3:00.
We just have to be a little bit on our toes about stuff and do it a couple of weeks beforehand, because I think we do get enough time before, when we get, when someone asks for something like that, I think we get ample time to be able to accommodate doing this.
But you think it's been excessive? You think?
Actually, there's a couple, I think there's been a few things that have been excessive. And I don't think that it's been public comment.
That has delayed the action, our agenda?
Yeah.
You don't? You think it's been the ceremonial?
I think ceremony's been a little bit of it, and filibustering's been a little bit more of it.
Filibustering on whose part?
Some of our colleagues.
Up here?
Mm-hmm. I try to keep my comments to three minutes or less.
Well, I mean, I actually take a little issue with that, because we have the right and the privilege to express to the fullest our position on whatever items that comes before us.
I completely agree with that, but I also think that as public servants, we should be aware and concise for the sake of everyone that's trying to take in whatever it is that we're doing, too.
Well, again, I'm going to say, my history of coming to the council meetings for over 30 years, prior to being elected, have you come before the body to make any presentations?
I absolutely have.
Okay.
Several times. While you were a councilperson. And I've actually gone back and looked on YouTube at some of our meetings prior to my service. And I also served on the MPC. If you want to see a meeting get contentious, and you don't just see the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, they comment per item, per agenda item, for and against. And you can have 20 people coming, 10 for, 3 against, 10 for, 10 against. We've seen nothing like that. And we don't even allow that privilege. And if we did that, we'd actually be hearing directly from the public right on those agenda items, and we'd actually have to deliberate on what they were presenting to us in real time, instead of just at the beginning of the meeting and just at the end of the meeting.
Well, again, you know, I'm not going, and I'm hearing you, but I'm saying again that the rules of the council, I thought, was adequate. And that commentary, the commentary on items on the agenda is the requirement. The other commentary, we just allow. And I'm saying that even the last two months where we was really bombarded with a lot of commentary, the decision or the position of the council are not usually influenced by public commentary. We usually would caucus amongst ourselves, and we would almost know how we're going to vote prior to the vote coming up.
Yes, sir. And I think that if we were on the table on exactly what you said just now, you'll see what the issue is. Seriously, you just said that we make our decisions without regard to the public's input. You literally just said that. I respect that we're going to have differences of opinion, councilmen. I do. We're going to go to lunch tomorrow, and we're going to be good friends. But I think that, I don't think I'm misinterpreting. I think you said exactly what you meant.
No, no, I'm saying the public commentary. We get, we get emails, we get phone calls, we get a lot of input from our constituents throughout our day and throughout our week, prior to these meetings. It's not, here, I'm talking about, we get emails, letters, phone calls, every day regarding legislation.
And all of those things go into the public record. But I think we've also established that this public forum is solemn and sacred, not just because of what we say up here, but what we hear from here, from the people out there, and the opportunities they present, not just to the people in this room right now, but everybody watching at home. Because it changes the conversation in a way that an individual just receiving an email does. We learn things from our constituents when they have that opportunity. But that's completely aside from this actual piece of legislation.
Alright, Counselman Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, one, if my constituents have something going on in the district on Saturday, or even on Sunday, I will attend. As far as coming up here on Saturdays or Sundays, I'm just going to be straight up so you won't have to figure out what I'm saying, I'm not coming. I'm not going to ask the staff to come, and I'm not coming. Because I just think that the charter says, my job is to come up here each second and fourth Mondays and Tuesdays to deal with legislation.
Yes, sir.
In fact, on Mondays, we're supposed to work out all of whatever, and on Tuesdays, we're just supposed to vote.
Yes, sir.
So, therefore, I think it's nice for those whoever decide to come, I'm not going to ask the staff to take out their busy schedule with their families and whatever, to come up here. I'm not going to learn how to turn on the lights. I'm not going to worry about the garage opening, the air. I'm coming up here and I'm going to do my business. If I have to come up for a public disaster or whatever, I will. If I have to come to a special meeting, I will. But as far as coming on this particular, it's nice for those of you that would choose to do it. But I don't want you all to get on the road and ask me to come to have a court.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm not coming. I'm just not coming. I'm not coming.
May I respond?
Oh, it ain't going to matter. I'm still not coming.
Well, no, because this particular legislation addresses that. It's not for Saturdays. In this, it's stipulated that it would be on 2:00 on the Tuesday before the meeting.
I ain't coming.
So, you wouldn't even come at 2:00 before the meeting?
No, I'm not coming. Because my constituents, they're not, they said, okay, Pastor, this is what happened. We're sending you down to City Hall to take care of our business. If you ever need us to come and give you support, let us know, and we are available. Up to this point, God has given me the ability to work out whatever I need with my colleagues. And up to this point, I have not needed, there are some that have come to visit. But as far as me sitting here saying, I need to take care, they need to come here, I'm going to go by the charter. Mr. Tom Arseno is here. Tom know the charter upside down. He was one of the best council members ever set foot up here. When he was a member of the Shreveport City Council, no matter what happened, they never changed the rules. They, whatever happened back in 1839, or when all this came about, they felt the need to leave all of this. You know, what happened is, we changed the form of government, and when we changed the form of government, that's why the three of us, the four of us now have the right to sit up here, because Bull had a lawsuit to get us up here. We were not even supposed to be up here. That's not how it was worked out. But Bull had a lawsuit, and therefore, said, well, we can have three, but you can't have four. All you got to do is check the history. So, I'm just proud to be up here. And I'm going to do whatever I can while I'm here. But I'm going to be consistent, and I'm not, you could ask my colleague John, we always talk, we respect one another, but when it comes to rule changing of this charter, I think the people, the public, are the ones who are supposed to do that and not us. And so, whatever the rule change, it just doesn't sit well with me. And I've always been straight with you, even about the sagging legislation, I told you upfront, how I was going to vote. This, my vote is no, if it's today, if it's tomorrow, if it's next year, just no.
I want to make sure I've got it. So, when we talked about moving the meeting to 4:30, you said no because it would mean that people would have to work later.
No, no. I didn't make a statement on why I didn't vote. I don't have a statement.
Okay.
I don't have a statement.
I want to finish what I was saying.
But I'm just saying, I don't have a statement. So, when you say, I made the statement, I don't have one.
I just remember in the comments, we were discussing that, that what you mentioned, you mentioned a few things.
I don't have a statement.
That's for the sake of time. Let's go to, let's go to Councilman Nicholson, and then Councilwoman Fuller follows Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't intend to introduce any additional legislation to change the council rules of procedure in a lesson until I think that I have the votes to do it. But I do want to offer a couple of thoughts about how we could address some of the very valid concerns that Councilman Bradford raised about the past several months. One change I would like to see the council consider is this. We need to have some overall time limit on public comments. And I am very open-minded about what that time limit should be. Some bodies have a 15-minute limit for all public comments, other bodies have longer time limits. But we can't have a rule that allows as many people as care to, to come here and speak because our meetings will be hijacked in the manner that we work. The time limit could be an hour for public comments, whatever it is. But we ought to consider a change to the rules that allows the chairman of the council to reduce the proportionate time given to each member of the public to the extent necessary to keep public comments within that time limit. And that's something we, the commission does that, I believe the school board does that. That is something that would really help us do the business of the city more efficiently and effectively. And then the second, less perhaps significant change that goes to Councilman Bradford's suggestion is, I would like to see us limit all public comments on Mondays to agenda items. I would be pleased to make that change, and I hope we can consider doing that in the short term. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, be here for a second. Let me just say, and I think, again, this council is a very cohesive council. We bring different life experiences and different perspectives. But at the same time, and I'm in agreement with Councilman Nicholson's observations only because this is the legislative body of the City of Shreveport. This is our board meeting. We the board of directors, and if you go to a board of directors meeting, we don't get, you know, I mean, the business of the, the business of the organization is priority. I'm not saying that our constituents and our citizens don't have the right to speak. They've always had the right to speak. But we have to present ourselves professional, with diligence to our tasks. And I'm not, I haven't been comfortable with the way our meetings have been going. So, I'm hoping that we can make some amendments and some adjustments, Councilman Nicholson, that will afford us a more, a more progressive, but yet professional demeanor in which, in how we conduct our meetings. I appreciate your comment, sir.
Alright, now, we are with Councilwoman Fuller.
I think it's very clear where everyone stands on. I've got nothing else to add.
Alright, Councilman Butcher.
I yield, yield, Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you would organize a committee to go back to previous councils to see why they didn't have the problem that we're having with speakers. And then I think we would come up with a solution. Because this particular council, I can't speak for, I can't remember the last year or whenever, other than I counsel, everybody else has moved smoothly. Like I said, Councilman Tom Arseno is in the building right now. They never seek to do what we were doing, and there's a reason. And I'm sure all of us have respect for him and could take his opinion as to why they didn't have trouble. On the council that I was on before, we just allowed the people to talk, and we gave them that opportunity. We never tried to stop them from talking, whatever, however it was, we would just give them courtesy if they needed three more minutes for that particular subject. We would just give them three more minutes. And after they finished talking, they would be finished. We wouldn't put a rule that say, okay, after your two minutes, and we wouldn't pick out certain people that we would allow to speak. Whoever wanted to speak, they just said, Mr. Chairman, would you allow them two more minutes? Or, sir, or ma'am, how long will it take you to finish your comments? They would say, give me two more minutes. You give them two more minutes, and they done. So, it's just a matter of the chairman taking charge and the council having compassion. And I don't think we would have to change the rule. We'll just change the whole sequence of the council that we're going to listen to whatever you have to say. If in fact, you say three minutes is up, then the council would normally say, Mr. Chairman, the three minutes is up. How much time do you need left to speak, to finish whatever you would have to say? They say two minutes or three minutes. We would allow them that time, we would vote, and they would finish, and we'd be done. And that's what happened in previous. Of course, this council is different. I'm sure there were some other rules some other time. But to bring peace and harmony is just kind, common, compassion, courtesy. And that would take care of all of whatever we talking about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Councilman Flur.
Councilman Nicholson, I want to be very sensitive to you when I ask this question.
Thank you, Councilman.
But all this brew, how hard it started, you passed your legislation. Do you suppose there's a correlation to?
Captain, I will tell you, I go home every day and I tell my wife I made new friends today. Every day, I make new friends at the council. I'm trying hard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I go back to Resolution 92? Councilman Green, I read your resolution.
I don't want to discuss it until tomorrow.
Respect that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alright. While we're speaking on council rules and speaking public comments, can, and we need to wait till tomorrow this time, but can you speak, can one of you speak, can you speak on the legislation that I was proposing?
Mr. Chairman, I really haven't done any work on that.
Okay.
Since we weren't going to do it until next meeting.
Okay. Can we speak on tomorrow then, make sure we have it? If you want to wait too long on that, then that's fine. I just think that that'll be a better solution to.
Mr. Thompson, could you pull the mic, do you? I couldn't hear what you said.
Somebody stole my mic. I didn't know.
You stole your money? Somebody stole your money?
Somebody stole his mic. Said attorney stole my mic.
Okay, okay.
Somebody stole your money. Oh, oh.
Alright. If that's it, then that's fine. Ms. Jones, could you proceed, please?
Resolution 95 is authorizing the use of certain city-owned equipment by the Junior League of Shreveport Bossier. Resolution 96 is authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Providence House.
Alright. Any discussion on that, those two? Ms. Jones, could you proceed with introduction of officers, please?
Ordinance 87 is amending the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 88 is amending the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 89 is amending the 2019 budget funding contractual services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates, Inc. Ordinance 90 is amending the 2019 downtown entertainment district fund budget. Ordinance 91, amending Chapter 74, Article 3, Section 74-53 of the Code of Ordinances regarding collection for higher annual permit fees. Ordinance 92 is amending Chapter 1, General Provisions of City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to misdemeanor offenses. Ordinance 93, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property located at 880 Texas Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101, in Cattle Parish, to cattle management. Ordinance 94, amending Section 26-274, execution of contracts associated with purchases of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 95 is amending Section 2-2, city vehicles of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 96, zoning case number 19-328-C, and ordinance to amend official zoning map of the UDC by rezoning. and ordinance to amend official zoning map of the UDC by rezoning property located on the west side of Shreveport Blanchard Highway at the intersection of North Lakeshore Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R.A., rural agricultural district, to I-two, heavy industrial district. Ordinance Seventy-Nine is zoning case number nineteen dash three thirty-seven C, and ordinance to rescind ordinance one twenty-nine of 2017 and to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport, UDC by rezoning property located on the southeast side of Fourth Street, approximately five hundred and eighty feet east of Marshall Street, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from I.M.U., mixed industrial use district, to I-two, heavy industrial district. Ordinance Ninety-Eight is zoning case number nineteen dash three forty-three C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport, UDC by rezoning property located on the east side of Municipal Pier Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty feet east of Lakeshore Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from C-one, neighborhood commercial district, and R-one seven, single-family residential, residential district, to O.S., open space district.
All right. Let's go ask what's that, well, since Bradford is up, I was about to ask you what's Ninety-Six, what's going on.
I yield. Which one?
No, I just wanted to know what was proposed on Ninety-Six, on, on number Ninety-Six, zoning. If I can ask Mr. Claus.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead. I'm, I'm looking.
I was just asking on Ninety-Six, what's, what's, what are they proposing here?
The property was being rezoned to heavy industrial, basically because of the characteristics of the area. Everything along that portion of Shreveport Blanchard Highway is basically heavy industrial, the KCS, Stockyard and so forth, and the other industrial sites along that, that stretch of Shreveport Blanchard Highway. But to answer your question, it's just being rezoned in order to open up a, a gas station, a convenience store, and eventually with wine and beer sales.
Okay. Ninety, Ninety-Eight?
You asked about Ninety-Eight, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Ninety, Ninety-Seven. I'm sorry.
Ninety-Seven was another one of those cases where, when the maps are redone as a, as a, in cooperation with the UDC, the property was initially zoned I-two. And the, the MPC rezoned the property to I.M.U., industrial misuse. And the property owner came back and requested that it be returned back to its original zoning class.
And that was the original owner?
Yeah, the original owner and the original, and the property was originally zoned heavy industrial. And we rezoned it to industrial mixed use. If you recall, we've had quite a few of those where your property owners come back and request that their property be returned to its initial zoning, that we recommend it to you to do that.
Okay. All right. That's what, that's what I need to know. That's it.
Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Let me ask Councilman Nicholson. On, on Ninety-Five, your, your legislation regarding take-home vehicle, are you aware of excessive, excessive, excessive use or some type of issues that brought this to your attention?
Councilman Bradford, thank you for the question. I had the bright idea a couple of weeks ago of asking Ms. Stewart to email me a list of everything she has suggested in past audit reports that the council has not acted on.
Okay.
And in one of her previous reports, she pointed out that the city had a, a policy that allowed cars to travel one mile, or ordinance allowed one mile outside the city limits without approval, but the ordinance, but the policy allowed five. So this is just making those two consistent. And I don't, I would tell you that I don't have a, a particular opinion as to exactly what the limit ought to be. But I do think that if we're going to have a, a policy and an ordinance, that they ought to, they ought to match. So this was, this comes out of an internal audit recommendation that was made several years ago.
Good. Okay. All right. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman.
And my second inquiry is, Councilman, me council lady, the lecherous council lady Fuller. On, on Ninety-Four, this was before the council, before, what, what was, what's your intent or motivation for bringing it back up?
My prerogative. That's all I'll say today. I can hold my comments until tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Fuller.
In regards to Ninety-Five, I'd just like to point out in previous council, Ms. Jones, are you still maintaining the city vehicle list of people as the previous C.A.O. did?
Yes, yes, sir.
I mean, they have to, they have to give you something in writing about the company, uh, city vehicle, right?
Right, that's correct.
Would you kind of elaborate on it a little bit?
I will. Um, each, periodically, anytime that there's a new city vehicle that is issued to an employee, that information has to be provided to the C.A.O.'s office so that we can also update the accounting because it has to be reported on payroll. So yes, and I have most recently received those lists, and I've requested them from the direct, department directors. So yeah, we do have an updated list, and we'll continue to keep it updated.
For some, for instance, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Continue. Uh, Ms. Jones, the NAT officer in the police department pays so much a day for the use of that car. And we recently found out that those cars have been inoperable, and they use their own car, and we reimburse them. But we also, they charge so much a day, but even if they go on a event on Saturday or Sunday, they're charged for the use of that car. So, I mean, we, we, we're charging employees so much a day for the use of the car, right?
The, the policy does state that, you know, per IRS rules, that there is a three-dollar-per-day charge that has to go, you know, be considered as income to the employee. But the particular instance that you're talking about, I'm not familiar with.
Well, I'll just refer you to Councilman Bradford for further details, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, the issue was, take-home, the, the, the parameters in which the policy states that, that Councilman Nicholson, through, through the audit, auditor, was suggesting that to help, I guess, lessen the wear and tear on vehicles, there should be, there should be a limit on which, though, doing our use. Use of it, I think, is not the issue. But, but are you in agreement with the, what is the policy on, on take-home cars in regards to, on regards to the, the, the demographics of, of the take-home car? Or, other, other, from the site of this city to outer, outside of city limits? Is there a policy regarding that?
Yeah, that, that is a policy, and this amendment actually cleans up that ordinance to specify that take-home vehicles have to stay within the city limits or be in no more than five miles outside of the city limits.
And from your notes, I guess, of your records that you keep, how, how many vehicles travel more than five miles outside of city? Are you, do you have any?
We have a handful that have been pre-approved, and, and they're all within the police department.
All within the police department.
Right, and it's because, you know, police department has employees that have special functions that, you know, if those employees need to, you know, perform those, we need to make, have some, some exceptions.
So, so the other departments that have city-owned vehicles, they don't usually travel five miles outside of the city?
Right. They're, they're within the city limits.
And you, you have a way of monitoring that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. But I think that, I think the legislation by this, by the extinguish councilman is in order. So I, I could see where we can monitor that and keep tight grips, because, again, cost-cutting is part of what we're trying to accomplish for right now.
That's it, Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be Blair.
All right. Thanks, Charles Nicholson.
I yield, Mr. Chairman.
And, Miss Jones?
Ordinance Seventy-Nine, excuse me, Seventy-Eight, adding sections twenty-six dash two twenty, affidavit attesting that city contracts was not secured through employment or payment of solicitor to Chapter Twenty-Six Finance, Article Six, Contracts Division One, generally of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to requirement of an affidavit for city contracts. Ordinance Eighty is amending Section Ten dash eighty-four of Chapter Ten of the Code of Ordinances relative to physical separation of sales of high alcohol content liquor for consumption off the premises. Ordinance Eighty-One is amending various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance Eighty-Three, amending the 2019 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance Eighty-Four, amending the 2019 General Fund Budget. Ordinance Eighty-Five, placing a moratorium on the issuance of any occupational license and certificates of occupancy for payday agencies and title loan agencies other than renewals. Ordinance Eighty-Six, an ordinance amending the 2019 Capital Improvements Budget.
All right. Is that a new one? Councilman Nicholson. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on the ordinance amending the Streets Special Revenue Fund to transfer seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for much-needed work, I, I support the ordinance, but I, I see this, and it reminds me that I have received many expressions of concern from members, or citizens in my district about Knight Street. Knight Street was due to be widened and repaired, and money was allocated from a 2011 bond issue. And as you all know, that hasn't happened yet, and I, I just would suggest to the city engineer and to the administration that if we've got millions of dollars sitting in the Streets Special Revenue Fund, we ought to consider using some of that money to do the work on Knight Street that we told citizens would be done years ago. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Fuller.
And I would second that for Zeke Street in my district. Thank you.
All right. Now, it may be clear now, the, the, the capital streets, which is concrete streets, doesn't come out of the Streets Special Revenue Fund.
I, that has been the, the suggestion, I understand, for this. Ms. Furlong, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to let him address the council about this.
Yeah, there was a proposal to the Infrastructure Committee to allocate some funds from the Streets Special Revenue Fund for that purpose.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. Ms. Jones, I didn't, I didn't hear your statement.
There was a proposal to the Infrastructure Committee to allocate some of the Streets Special Revenue Fund for Knight Street. So we are, you know, definitely in support of allocating some money to, to make sure that that project gets done.
Have, 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 have the recommend, recommended streets in the various council districts been, for asphalt overlays, have been presented? Because I haven't seen it.
Yeah, the, we've gone and done a general recommendation of an amount of money that we have available from the Streets Special Revenue Fund, but the specifics would still need to be determined by the council members.
Councilman Nicholson.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Ms. Furlong, thank you for stepping up. I just want to make sure that the council understands that the Knight Street work I'm talking about has, has been in the making for years. Money, as I said, from 2011 was supposed to be allocated to this project. I understand that there were some issues with the engineering of the road and some other issues that weren't anticipated that have increased the cost of the project. But all I can tell people in my district who called about this is I agree with you. I think it needs to be done as soon as possible. And, and I'd like to see some funds designated to this project as the Infrastructure Committee recommended.
Yes, sir. And, and that was discussed at the last Infrastructure Committee meeting, and the Infrastructure Committee meeting made the recommendation to appropriate funds from the Streets Special Revenue Fund to Knight Street. And there's another meeting tomorrow, and I think we can discuss it a little bit further. I think the only reason action hasn't been taken is just a little, I don't know if I'd say confusion about who's going to put the legislation forward, and, and we can discuss that.
I'll be happy to do it.
Very good. And, Mr. Bradford, your, your question, in, in the past, the city had, the engineering department has submitted a list of, a long list of streets in every district about asphalt overlay
Sure.
in, in regards to the Streets Special Revenue Fund. It was discussed in the, the last Infrastructure Committee meeting that there may not be funds for a large asphalt overlay program this year because of some, some federal funds that we need to take advantage of for a Linwood project. In order to take advantage of some, quite a large amount of federal funds to address Linwood, a large portion of the Streets Special Revenue Fund is going to go towards that project in the Infrastructure Committee meeting. They did make the recommendation to allocate those funds. So I would anticipate legislation on that project also.
So what's the estimate on the, on the Knight Street project?
I've had all that in my head in the past few weeks, but I can't remember it right now, but I've got it all written down.
Let me, I'm on to the Instruction Meeting tomorrow, and hopefully I can ascertain some, some, some information that I need to, because that was the only fund that, that, that was addressed the broad sector of the city. And there are streets in my district that have not been asphalt overlaid in 40 years. I mean, we constantly try to work on that, but to say we don't, we won't be able to address any streets, it's, it's not fair.
I'm not saying we're not going to address any streets, but, and, and it's, you know, the, the council's decision to allocate the money. But there's, there's an opportunity to take, to take advantage of a lot of federal funds right now to address Linwood. So if it's the council's decision to take advantage of those funds and, and put up our match for this Linwood project, and that's going to be the council's decision, and all, all the projects will be presented.
Certainly, certainly. I understand, Ms. Furlong, but I, I guess what I'm asking you now, going back a little bit, some of, the Linwood project was a part of the 2011 bond proposal? To a certain extent, and I, I think it was, right?
I don't think so. I, it.
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
Was the Knight Street a part of the 2011 bond proposal?
Yes, sir.
The Knight Street was? So the, so that, the funding for that should be somewhere.
There is funding for Knight Street, but there's, there's just a shortfall right now.
There would be a shortfall.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I'm sure we'll discuss it tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Green.
Yes, sir. Whenever you get a chance, I'd like to talk to you about the streets and district areas.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have Councilman Flurry.
When you get time, I'd like to talk to you about streets and district areas.
Yes, sir.
I just want one street, gentlemen. That's all I ask of Paul, one street.
Well, while we're at it, Councilman Butcher wants to speak about streets in his district.
I want a, I want a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar match for the parish to put a red light at Wallace Lake Road and, and Southern Loop. Mine's a lot cheaper than y'all's.
Well, I got three streets that I'd like to talk about in District G that won't cost more than, than sixty grand, so we can, we can discuss that, too. Mr. Thompson, do we have any table legislation to be?
I'm not aware of any to be removed from the table, Mr. Chairman.
We have any appeals?
Mr. Chairman? Did you, did you just mention table legislation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to request that we remove Ordinance Sixty-seven. I've been in communication as well, as dialogue with Mr. Quinn Eubanks for the last, I guess, month since, since we put this, looking at some alternatives. And I think we, I think we got some, some proposals that we're going to be bringing forward. Mr. Eubanks, is he, is he still in the building?
He was. He just stepped out.
He stepped out.
He stepped out.
But we'll, we'll give you a little bit more information tomorrow, but I, I think I'm going to ask that this be pulled from the table. Okay? Thank you.
We have no property standards appeals to be considered today. No ABO appeals. MPC tomorrow. Any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, nothing for today, Mr. Chairman. Nothing for today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any reports from officers, boards, or committees? I do know that you said it's an infrastructure... You have a meeting tomorrow?
At ten o'clock.
Ten a.m.?
Be comfortable. It's going to be a long one.
Long meeting tomorrow with infrastructure. And, okay. Cloak support, Mr. Thompson?
You've heard from Mr. Curry today on the mayor's appointment. We also have received two appeals concerning Larkin Development, and letters went out stating that they will be heard on August the thirteenth.
Yes, two. You say two appeals, right?
Right.
All right. And we have requests from the city attorney, am I correct, to go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that's immediately, which is on the United States of America versus the State of Louisiana, versus the Street of... The City of Shreveport consent decree.
Chairman Ford, this is, could I ask a question?
Councilman Flurry?
Dr. Timothy Jones has been bringing up about a red light over there.
Same thing. Yes. It should be on tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I need you to... Look, I need you to be enthralled with us. Thank you.
All right. I'm tired of getting Mr. Eubanks. I'm tired of coming in. We can talk with him tomorrow on that, Mr. Bradford, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into the executive?
So...
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by the chair during the executive session. Okay. Hit again. All right. Motion carries with seven. Thank you.